Good evening. This is the April 6th, 2022, meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board. Our first order of business is the approval of the agenda. Brian?
Motion approved.
Motion from Brian, second from UC. Any changes? All those in favor? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor. The agenda is approved. Next is public comment. I don't believe there's anybody here for public comment tonight. All right. Then we will move to the approval of the minutes from March 16th. Denise?
I move to approve the March 16th regular meeting minutes.
Motion from Denise, second from Matt. Denise?
So I have two corrections. The first is under public comments, under William Hall. The last sentence, it said Tom, but I believe it was still referring to Bill. So it should either say William or Bill Hall, or Bill, just first name, I guess. And on page three, where it says Rebecca Noe of Oyster River talked about her comments, it should be, I think it's a third sentence down on March 30th, it should be Tona Brown, not Tanya Brown. It's T-O-N-A.
Heather?
On page two, where it says raising of the old middle school, it should be raising, raising, R-A-Z-I-N-G. Yeah, on page two, where it says raising of the old middle school, R-A-I-S-I-N-G, it should be R-A-Z-I-N-G.
It's a big difference. With those changes, all those in favor of approving the March 16th minutes? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor. Minutes are approved. That brings us to announcements, commendations, and comments from the district.
Good evening. Misty Lowe from Mastway.
And David Goldsmith from Mohermet. We're here to just give you some updates about sort of where we are and where we're going. And we do these things collaboratively, so we would give our presentation to you collaboratively. We seem to be sort of in three spots on the time-space continuum right now. We're dealing with our, right? Yeah. We're dealing with, we're dealing with our students in the now. It's still only April, of course, so we're in our school year, doing all of that work. But we're also moving to that space where we're planning for the end of the year, how we wrap up our school year with all of our students, how we recognize our fourth graders before they move to the middle school, and how we help transition our fourth graders to the middle school. And then we're also actually getting ready for next year already. So we're doing all three of those things simultaneously.
We just wanted to be sure and let the community know that we have been thrilled to be working with Mr. Richard, as well as his administrative team, to start planning for our fourth graders rising to fifth grade. We've had some fun opportunities already, believe it or not, with some of our fourth grade classes, who have done a variety of research projects and gone to visit the middle school in order to use the new green room, which has been really fun. Seventh graders have provided some mini tours. The children have been able to eat lunch at their, their future middle school. So it's been another nice addition to start the transition for our current fourth graders going to fifth grade.
Brian?
Misty, I know with all the doings going on in Lee lately, how did that lockdown go the other day? Was, had the kids, I mean, I know it was just basically locked, no one could go outside, really.
Correct. It was what I referred to as a shelter in place. I worked, the Lee PD are tremendous, very supportive, very communicative. I like to compliment the SAU leadership as well, because naturally, that is who I have on speed dial in that sort of situation. It started as just an abundance of concern, and then the concern grew as the situation changed. So I hope I answered your question well. We tried to let parents know your students are safe. We're all here.
I think the whole process went very fluid.
Sure.
Very fluid. But I was just worried if the kids had any.
Kids were nervous. I'll be honest, I was greeting them when they got off the buses the next morning, and they had a lot of questions. So we encouraged our teachers. Open circle is always our go-to, to have open, honest conversations with our students in a, in a caring and thoughtful way. And so we lean on open circle. Our counselor was certainly available. But I think meeting and greeting the students and seeing how they arrived to the building. It's interesting that you ask, Brian, because transportation actually called the building ahead of time and asked me to greet a couple of buses, because the students had so many questions for their bus driver, even on the ride-in. So it certainly was something that created worry.
Yeah, not much happens in Lee, but when it does, it goes big. So, thank you. What's that?
When it happens in Lee, you get helicopters.
That's right.
Helicopters, drones, K-9. It was, it was interesting.
Yeah. No, no, it was a great response I heard from parents.
I did get some positive feedback. That felt good.
Yeah, it was good. Good, good job. Appreciate it.
Sure. Any other questions?
Not a question, but I saw you were able to schedule some music performances from Mastway.
Yes. Mastway and Mohermet will be having music performances coming up. So it's something, we're very fortunate that the distancing has changed with singing. So our music teachers collaborate very closely. They'll be running that program very similarly, be careful with distancing. Again, very exciting to be in the new middle school for those performances. So we look forward to that. Each baby step toward normalcy post-COVID, whenever we get to that benchmark, you know, just moving that direction, super exciting.
And we've, we've communicated, you know, with our families about that. Our buildings are in a little bit of a different place with singing because of, given the distancing requirements throughout the year and the different shapes and capacities of our buildings. Some classes, at least at Mohermet, haven't been able to sing yet. So our interact, our concerts are going to be different than at Mastway, where they've been able to do that for most of the year. But we are communicating that out to everybody. Next year, we hope that we'll be back to all of our things.
So it just brings up a question. Are those the first, going to be the first musical performances in the new concert hall? I'm curious. Oh, that'll be fun.
Yeah. And then we're, we're seeing the music staff, K through 12, organize around that room now.
Yep. The middle school band has, before, but yeah. What's that? The middle school band has, I think, the 16th of April, 19th of April, something like that, has in the concert hall.
We'll get the updated dates from the music. It's happening so fast. I mean, I think Pam Felver got hers out in 2.5 seconds, and everybody else has been chasing that kind of path. So Strings set up a date, but they had to change it. So we'll get all of those out to the board, so as you want to, you can attend them. They're great fun. I can't wait to see an official concert after two years.
We did have performances before, actually. You just missed it by like five minutes.
Well, yeah, but I mean, a student performance.
But yeah, it was, it was a student in the middle school that was phenomenal on the piano. Absolutely phenomenal. So the sound, if you haven't been there for music, the sound quality in there is like I've never heard before.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening, everyone. Jay Richard, the principal at the middle school. As you might have noticed, the demolition and removal of the building has started. It's a huge fun distraction for the staff and students to, you know, watch this. And I do want to remind everybody, kids continue to ask me, what are we doing with all those materials, Mr. Richard? Ninety-one percent of that building is being recycled. So if you happen to walk by, we have a great view, of course, from the new facility, but everything's being sorted into piles with steel and aluminum and wood and those types of things, and bricks. Again, we're saving approximately 300 to 400 bricks for people that want mementos. All you need to do is call the OMS front office. We've started a list. So if you're interested in that, please reach out. In the midst of Kindness Week, which has been a lot of fun this week, our counseling staff have done an exceptional job of organizing this. Today, for example, was mismatched day, where it looked like everybody got dressed in the dark this morning before they came to school. So it's a lot of fun. And yesterday was superhero day. Mr. Salvon, my assistant principal, and I were forced to wear a cape during lunch. So we had a lot of, kids loved to see that and tease us. So it's a great week. We also, we also have two guest speakers. Yesterday was Rob Saret, who was an artist. And tomorrow and Friday, we have Sam Drazen. If you're familiar with the book Wonder, a lot of my students at the middle school have read that. There's a big connection with that. So we're looking forward to that. And again, this is in our recital hall, so it's been already a huge asset to bring our guests perform, you know, guest speakers and performers in. And already mentioned, our first concert is next week. Strings Orchestra will be next Tuesday night, so I'm looking forward to that. Another first is, we had our first field trip, literally, in two years. So my fifth and sixth graders actually walked over with them. We went and saw Splash over at UNH, which talks about the effects of plastics in the oceans. And our students had a lot of fun with that. And actually, they're starting to work on projects related to the environment. And last, but not least, as Misty and David were already collaborating together about the transition, planning some excellent opportunities and activities for fourth graders to come over and visit the new school this spring. Thank you.
Jay, just a quick question. I remember Jean reported last week that Math Counts was going to the state finals. Do you have a sense of how they did?
I don't. I have not got a report yet, so.
Dean, if you're watching, let us know.
Good evening. Rebecca Noe from Oyster River High School. First, last week, we had Tona Brown come, and she was a virtual speaker for us, and it was absolutely exceptional. I felt it was very inclusive. A lot of really good questions from our kids and the audience, and very real answers from Tona. And so we're really looking forward to have her coming back next year and hopefully in person. And so we'll begin those, that planning with Andrea for the orchestra, and then with our DEIJ student group, too. And we also had Katie Greer. Actually, we had her come during the day, throughout the district, for the kids. And then we had our evening event for parents. There were over 80 community members that came to that. And so I thought there was a lot of insightful information that really might help parents out. I did add in my newsletter for this past week that if parents have other ideas for these kind of night activities that we have for them, to go ahead and send us those. We've had quite a few for this year. And so I'm just really interested what parents think that they need to know also, so we can put those together for them. We do have a spring pep rally coming up, so I think Olivia's going to talk about that a little bit later on. Prom tickets go on sale tomorrow, and so make sure all parents and kiddos know that. And then we are planning, as my colleagues mentioned, the Step Up Days. And so Mr. Richard and I will be planning our eighth grade Step Up Day for later this, in this season, closer to the summer. And then we'll also have some summer activities with our College 101, our boot camp for freshmen, different things we're planning over the summer. And hopefully, we will have those dates out right after April vacation, so parents can plan for those in the summer and early fall. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Announcements, commendations, and comments from the board? Brian?
I wanted to congratulate Olivia on becoming a scholar athlete. Just noticed it online yesterday, so congratulations. And Jay was talking about the demolition of the, the old middle school. And it was interesting this week, because I was on a video call with the, with the destruction team, as we call it now. And as during the call, I heard a big bang, and they were, an entire wall came down, I guess, while they were doing it. And it was interesting to watch grown men like Jim actually stop and stare out the window at it for a while. Literally, the meeting stopped. So it's not just the kids that are doing it, that are watching it. It's the adults, too. Because I was there on the first day when they were taking stuff down, and it was amazing. I turned around, and there's about 100 kids at the main entrance, watching them just grab at it. And they were just starting, you know, and it was, the parents were stopped and the, I mean, it was, it's going to be a tough few weeks to keep these, the kids there, but they're fascinated by it. And it's actually pretty cool to watch. So we're hoping to get some drone footage in the next week or so as it's coming down, and add that to the historical part of it. But it's going well, and, and it was interesting to see adults act like children. So it was good. So.
Denise?
As Rebecca just mentioned, the Tona Brown, I did tune into that, and it was fabulous. And, and I just want to say, you know, commendation to the student group, the, I guess they call themselves a Jedi group, Justice Equity Diversity and Inclusion, for putting, putting it together. And the questions they asked were so, like, thoughtful and really professional. So it was just a wonderful, you know, wonderful presentation. So thank you for that. And I also tuned in to the Katie Greer Internet Safety the next night, and also, you know, very well done. So yes, I think it's important for folks to let the principals know, you know, what, what is it, what types of events do you want to see? Because I think it's very worthwhile, particularly as we hopefully return more to in person. But I do think that the remote option is also good for folks that maybe can't get out. So maybe, you know, going forward, one of the things that, from the pandemic, that we've seen, at least, I know I've seen it in my work, is hybrid is such a, you know, when it's feasible, it's a wonderful option for folks.
So I also went to the Katie Greer event, and I really enjoyed it. And Sarah and Susan did a really nice job running the Teams Live event. And I also enjoyed the fact that it was virtual, so I could be doing other things at home while also listening to the presentation. That was great. And then Brian, you might be interested to know that my daughter has one of the front classrooms of the building. And when the demolition started, I'm like, oh, it's going to be just like where they had to have the teachers wear the microphones so they could hear. The building is so sealed that they can't hear the demo. And it's not been bothering any of the classroom activities besides kids going to peek and see what's going on. So I thought that was pretty cool.
I'm lucky my son is in the back end of the building, so I don't have to worry about that.
All right. That brings us to district reports. Do you want to start with the COVID update?
So there is no metric this week. She has pretty much stopped the metric updates because of the data and the change in how the data's being reported. And then obviously, there isn't as much data being reported to the state because of the use of rapids. So locally, though, we are still doing well. We're still updating our website. We've had a little uptick in some cases, just, just small. I think it's about eight at the middle school today, and five or six at the high school. That's kind of the most that we've had in a while, in terms of positive cases. And so we're just kind of watching that. But it hasn't been more significant than that. Usually, if we get to five or six, it comes down, it goes back up. So we're kind of hovering around that, that number. But in terms of other illness, it still is, you know, we have a lot of other illness. So I did have some parents reach out to me when they saw some alarming quarantine numbers. So we still do put students, we kind of denote them as quarantined until we figure out if it is COVID-positive or not. If we find out it's another illness, if they've tested negative, then they come out of that quarantine. So we still are reporting that students are in quarantine until we have otherwise received information. Other than that, that's really, that's really the update. I think I'm going to fade out here pretty soon.
Are we still doing the testing with the students?
Offering testing.
Is that?
SAS, yeah.
Has that number gone down, though?
We have had a bunch of, so last week, I believe I had one or two and a few inconclusives. If we get an, we're having more inconclusives, and I talked to the UNH lab about that a little bit. Some of it is due to the change in how they're doing testing. So when they run the tests, they usually have done two cycles, but because there's such a reduction in testing, they're really running it through one cycle. And if they have inconclusives, then what we do on our end is we redo the test. So if we get an inconclusive on a student, it could be the beginning of an infection. It could be the end of an infection, or it could just be the way that the test was run. So I think last week, we redid three of those, and only one of them actually ended up being positive.
Are there less people take doing the testing, though?
Oh, less? It's pretty much standard. I don't know if you guys are seeing a big change in your numbers. I think it's, when I look at the testing, high school's always sort of the one that's off if kids show up or not, because we don't pull them out of class. There's a schedule for middle school, you know, they're called down by team, obviously with the classrooms at the elementary school, called down by classroom. So the numbers are kind of still standing there, but we don't have high rates of positivity. Our highest rates were shortly after that winter break of positivity. So we're, we're really at zero or one, maybe two positives every week. Very low.
Are we still at the 500 to 600?
Yeah.
SAS? That's, I think that's what Brian was asking.
Yeah. Well, we have over 625 registered, but that includes staff. You know, if we have staff going down every week, sometimes they're going down every week. We've had a few pull-out of testing. So when they pull out a testing, they have to contact me, and I inactivate them, and Josh removes them from Power School, their permission from Power School. I would say, this week I had none. But for maybe five or six weeks in a row, I probably had two or three students that were pulled out. And that was usually because they had, you know, been COVID-positive. And if you test too soon after having COVID, you'll likely test positive. It doesn't mean that you can't get COVID in that 90-day window. We are seeing many people get COVID in that 90-day window. But asymptomatic, we want to make sure that there are symptoms present if we're doing a test. So we're still offering testing. We still have the test kits from the state that we're giving to families who need them. We still have lots of rapids on hand from the state, and then, of course, PCR tests from UNH. Yep, all of the locations, as you all probably read, have closed for extra testing sites. It didn't really tick up our numbers too much because of the availability of rapid tests now.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
So Suzanne is going to provide a foundation for competency-based learning that we've been doing in the district, really since I've been here at the elementary level. Initially, it was called standards-based. And then, as it evolved into the middle school, probably eight or nine years ago, it became more global around competencies. The difference, just to give you a taste of this, is there was something like 144 standards. And asking teachers to monitor 144 standards, which we did for one year, turned out to be an insane activity and exhausting, and really counterproductive to what we were trying to accomplish. So as it evolved into the middle school, we went to a broader competency model, which is outlined in statute. And as it evolved into the high school, we did the same. So Suzanne is just going to give a foundational report tonight, basically to bring it back to the forefront for the board as a whole, and to introduce it to Matt and Heather, because this is a pretty important component of how we're monitoring student progress. So Suzanne?
Sure. So some of this may be review, so I apologize. And I will, and what I'd like to do is just kind of go back to the history and talk a little bit about where competencies came from, and how it arrived in New Hampshire a little bit, and then what it means to Oyster River and where we are right now with competency learning. And we're really going to focus on the instructional piece, the curriculum piece, and the learning piece today. So prior to competencies, when I was in school, we had the Carnegie unit, which some of you may remember. And it was all based on time, time in a seat. And so this was, this system was derived really around, around the same time that conversations around compulsory education. And every state has different, different laws around compulsory education, how old kids need to be before they can remove themselves from public education if they choose to do so. So in the state of New Hampshire, it's 18; other states, it's at different ages. And so they, this system really was put into place, the Carnegie unit was put into place as a way to really monitor in a very coherent systematic way attendance for students and completion. And so it was based on the number of hours you were seated in, in a classroom. And that was how high school credit, in part, was earned. What happened was, in the 90s, there was a huge push, and even before that, there was a big push away from the Carnegie unit. And really started focusing more on, okay, how do we, how do we know a student has mastered material or gained, gained knowledge? And that should really be the focus of how credit is earned. And the movement away from numbers of hours that a student is seated in a chair as being the measurement for earning credit in high schools. And so that's really where it came from. In the state of New Hampshire, in 2005, that's when the state of New Hampshire really went into the Carnegie unit and said, we are no longer measuring. There's one place in the state of New Hampshire where they do measure through the Carnegie unit, and that's adult education. That's sort of like a holdout. But everywhere else, the Carnegie unit is, is not used as a measure of, of credit earning for high school. So the state really put into place a law for schools, by the year, the school year of 2008, 2009, all high schools had to have in place written, and written competencies that are being utilized with clear criteria of mastery of competencies in order to gain credit. And so that's where Oyster River High School went. We are in compliance, and that's where the state, throughout the state high schools went. So we have competencies for each course. Those can be found online. And they have outlined the competencies and the standards. Most, most of the standards are online also. But that's part of the state law. So the, what are competencies and how are they different than the Carnegie unit? Again, the Carnegie unit's really about seat time. Competencies really are designed at Oyster River as broad overarching concepts that we really would like to talk about in relationship to how they're interconnected. So they're not, they are not about content. So it's not, and I'm going to talk a little bit more specifically about what I mean by that. So we're really talking about broad overarching concepts that are really skill-based. And then the standards and the learning targets are specifically, that's when you drill down into some more very specific areas of measurement for kids and learning for kids. Competencies really describe what we want kids to know and be able to do. So you'll see in the example that I give you, it says, "Students will be able to," because that's what we're really saying to kids. We want you to be able to do this. The beauty of competencies, one of the beauties of competencies, is that it really makes learning transparent for kids. And so I'm going to talk a little bit, a little bit more about that. But it also makes it, individualization and personalization a little bit more available for things like extended learning opportunities, project-based learning, and things like that. So, so I'll get a little bit more into each of those, those pieces. The difference between, I'm going to kind of go back to this idea of the difference between what this looks like versus sort of the traditional model. So competencies really is about personalization and really working with kids to be able to gain mastery of something that we're asking them to do, and being transparent about it. The difference really is, when I think about it, I think about it as a cycle versus sort of a linear, something that's linear. So when I was in school, you know, there was a very, there was an objective that the teacher walked in with, and you didn't necessarily know what that objective was. Sometimes you did, and sometimes you didn't. The teacher would instruct, then you would be assigned work according to that instruction and that information that you were gaining and learning. And then you would have a test or an essay. And typically, you would just keep moving. Right? So the competency-based learning and education is really more cycle-based. So we have an objective. It's transparent. We tell kids what we want them to know and be able to do. Then we have the teacher instructing, right? And that could look a different, a variety of different ways. And then we have formative assessments, which are what we would consider things like quizzes or exit tickets, or some smaller pieces that teachers would give to the students, and the students would give them feedback. This, and that feedback helps teachers determine where they need to go with the instruction as they move forward. So every student will have a different understanding, and so that feedback's important for the teacher to bring that in and say, okay, this student needs a little bit more support with this area. This other student is ready to go, and they're going to keep moving. And so it allows to tailor that instruction depending on what, where the students' needs are. And they continue to instruct students. And then, when they feel that the class has moved along enough, then they can give them the summative assessment. And the summative is what we would traditionally call a test, or an essay, or something of that nature. And then sometimes what happens, and you'll hear teachers talking about relearning and reassessment, well, some kids may not have mastered the material by that point. And so the teacher may say, we need to go back, we need to relearn and reassess. And so the teacher may say, we need to go back, we need to relearn and reassess, even after the summative. And so the cycle begins all over again, right? So we're going to identify the areas that the student needs additional support. We're going to figure out how to give them that support. That could look like going to Flex or Bobcat Time. That could look like going to the math lab or the writing lab. That could look a variety of, it depends on what the needs are for that student. And then they would sit with the teacher, and they would determine when that next, when that next assessment would happen. And that is more of sort of the cycle with competencies. So it's, I hope that helps to kind of see the difference between sort of this linear traditional model and this, the cycle of competency-based education and instruction. So there are some things that I hear when I talk to people about competency-based education, like content doesn't matter in this. Content does matter, but it's not necessarily a driver. I'm going to talk a little bit more about that. So it's, it's really, CBE is really more about deeper learning and application and less about, do you know this date and that date and this, and, you know, so it's a little bit, a little bit different. CBE is less rigorous, again, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about rigor and relevance. And then CBE is a fad. It's, it's been in the state of New Hampshire since 2005. So it's not something that's new. It's something that schools have been doing for, for quite a while in the state. So here's an example of a competency from our Essentials of English class in the high school. It is, as you can see, we're talking about literary tools, we're talking about analysis. These are higher order of thinking. This is really, when we talk about rigor, this is, this is challenging for kids. And, and one of the things that you'll see with something like a competency such as this is that it could, students could do, could practice this competency multiple times during the school year, because you could be working on this regardless of what the text is. So if a student maybe doesn't master it the first time, it doesn't necessarily mean that second semester, they're not working on it again, and they have an opportunity to master it second semester, that time, the idea of time. So content is important because you're still using text, you're still using, you're still, you're still talking about text, but it's not necessarily the driver. This, this is not about, have you read this particular book and do you understand the characters? This is really about a skill. It's an analysis of the text. And then they'll have standards, teachers will have standards, and underneath those standards, they'll have very specific learning targets. Those learning targets are typically book, like, that could be something very specific towards the book. But I'm not going to get into all those levels of the curriculum for this presentation. So when we talk about rigor and relevance, one of the things that people talk about with competencies, sometimes one of those myths is that there's, you know, where's the rigor in competencies? And so I like to point to Bloom's Taxonomy, which this is a variation of that, because it's, Bloom's Taxonomy has been worked on since he first wrote it. But, so this is a variation. And, and what I tried to do, and I'm not going to go into the, it's, it's very wordy, and this, you know, is not a good example of how to have a slide for people to look at, because it's so wordy. But I wanted to give you some specific examples of, of how competencies fit into this idea of rigor. So when I think about remembering and understanding, that's like the very foundational pieces, right? So we, we have instruction, kids need to remember things that they're being taught, they need to understand them, and they need to give back that information. But there's also a lot of other layers through application and analysis, evaluating, those are very, those are more challenging, more rigorous pieces to curriculum and instruction and learning. And those are the things that we are trying to really bring to, to kids, to really to get them to. And these are the things that people at, you know, we, that we're being asked to do in our own jobs. And so we're helping kids to get to that point. Now, developmentally, kids are going to be at different places. So a middle, middle school student, this is going to look very different for a middle school student than it would for a senior, because they're developmentally in very different places. And so competencies may even look a little bit different for middle school kids than they do for, let's say, a 12th grader or 11th grader taking an elective course. But the example that I gave of, in the last slide, for the English example of a competency, you can see that's really on the analysis side. We're asking kids to analyze. And that's, that's a higher order of thinking. That's more rigorous than saying, you know, tell me who the character is and what they said on page 12. So instructional strategies that we use to be able to work with kids within, with competencies, really essential questions are huge. So we tell kids, this is what we want you to know and be able to do, and here are some questions around that, to get kids to be thinking about it. Sometimes you'll go into classrooms and you'll see questions written on the board for the kids to walk into and to start thinking about, really to, to prime that, that intellectual pump there. Really, the idea that time, one of the things that's, that I think is wonderful about competencies is this idea of time as being this construct. We, as educators, we want to give kids time to master the material, to really learn the material. And so competency allows for time. And different kids are going to take different, different amounts of time to be able to learn the material. And that's one of the things that competencies allows for, is for that relearning, that reassessment, that revisiting, to be able to give kids that time. Because the goal is that they gain that knowledge. The time is almost irrelevant in, in some ways, just as long as they, we give them that opportunity to gain the knowledge. And so competencies allows for that. To be able to do that, we need to have really effective feedback. So teachers need to be giving timely, effective feedback, and that's, that can often be a struggle, you know, when you have interruptions and things like that to the, to the school day. But the teachers, that's really important. It's something that we, we strive to do. We strive to keep our schedules consistent as much as we possibly can with few interruptions so that feedback loop is there. And so kids have access to things like Bobcat Time and, and Flex so that they can go and meet with their teachers if they need to. And transparency. Kids today, they're, the students today want to know why they're learning what they're learning, what, what are they learning? What, what are they being asked and, and how is it relevant to them? And so they're, they are asking us these challenging questions, and we, we need to be able to say, to, to live and to other students, this is what we would like for you to learn. And we're going to help you learn that, and we're going to help you get there. So I think that competencies and Oyster, and Oyster River's core beliefs really work together, because we do believe that all students can learn. We believe that impersonalization and individualization. And so I think that some of these basic foundational ideas of competencies works well with some of the things that we value as a district. So I'm happy to answer questions. The high school and the middle school are both, we're starting to become, get to similar places with this. We have, both schools have competencies and standards written. We're going to be revisiting them. We have a curriculum cycle, so we'll be going through and revisiting different curriculums. And so we're going to be working on language now that we're all back together again. We need to look at our language and look at the way that they're written and make sure there's some consistency for kids between buildings. And then, but for the most part, the, both the middle school and the high school have been using them for relearning and reassessment. They're utilizing, students are utilizing the time that they're given to be able to work with teachers as coaches individually, to be able to meet their needs. And, and the assessment piece will, we, we can talk about assessment and, and grading later and what that looks like. I don't know if anyone has questions at all. I went very quickly and it's like very broad presentation, but Denise?
Thank you. So I think the, the two biggest, I guess, you know, concerns or criticisms of competency-based learning, I don't think anybody has issues with competencies. I think people agree, yes, competencies are important, and, and that's not where it is. But one is, it's more about the grading, so maybe I am jumping ahead. But one is that if a parent sees, say, progressing, their student is progressing, they don't know if that's good or not good. So it, they're not, because it's not like as objective, at least in their mind, they just, you know, they, they just don't know, like, should my student have mastered this? Or, oh, no, everybody's progressing because we haven't gotten to that point yet or whatever. So that's the first thing I hear a lot. The second thing I hear a lot is that because students know they'll have an opportunity to, say, you know, retake a test, or, or they'll, they go through this relearning process, that they don't really take it seriously initially because they know they'll have other, another chance, essentially. And those are kind of the two, I think, key concerns that I, at least that I've heard from parents.
So the, the grading piece, we can, if you don't mind, I'm going to parking lot the grading conversation, because that can lead us. The communication piece, I think, is really important, how we're communicating student learning. I think whether it's competencies or numeric grade, that's always, that's always a question. What is, what does this mean? What is it saying? Is my, how is my student progressing in their learning? So I think that is something that we can talk about more fully also, and that kind of probably goes along with, with the conversation around assessment practices and grading is how we're communicating, because grades technically should be the way we're communicating student learning. As far as what the students think, I, Liv is, I don't want to put you on the spot.
No, I was going to say, to respond to your question, Denise, about the relearning and retaking things. I personally think that having that opportunity to relearn and retake is very valuable in actually understanding and learning the content and material, because I know, like, for myself personally, I have a little bit of like test anxiety sort of thing. So like, while taking a test, I worry, like, do I have enough time, like that sort of thing? And so for other students in that same situation that I've talked with, having that opportunity to be able to relearn and retake the tests, like, the first time you take it, it may be, you get, have a bunch of silly mistakes because you're stressing about, will I have enough time to even finish, that sort of thing? But then you can go back and be like, I actually know this content, let me show you that I know this content and material, which I think, I've had a lot of teachers that have allowed retaking and haven't allowed retaking, and the classes that have done better are the ones that have allowed me to retake, and I've understood and grasped the concepts better. I don't know if that helps answer your question.
Yeah, thank you.
I do think, too, for some kids, reassessment, you're, you are relearning and reassessing, and sometimes depending on the class, the content of the class and the course itself, they can continue. So, so you're actually, for some, some kids figure out very quickly that it's actually more work for them to do that, and they don't want to do that. They'd rather just study and do it the first time instead of, instead of having more to do. So.
As far as, and along with what Denise was saying, the communication issue, I know we got to share this with people and probably at some point have a big presentation with parents, but what about the challenge of consistency throughout the staff? Because I know teachers are dealing with this differently, they're grading differently. I mean, everyone knows what an A, B, or C is, because as long as it falls within the score, but some of them give out grades differently when it comes to competencies, and some of them, as, as Livia said, they're not retesting, or they're not allowing retesting where others are. So where, how do we kind of broach that chasm of inconsistency that it sounds like we have?
That's a great question.
That's why I asked it.
I'm writing it down for us to talk about, because I do think that that's, you know, some of it, there's, there are multiple pieces to your question. One's about consistency of relearning and reassessment. The other one's consistency of grading, which has always been an issue, you know, in higher ed, they talk about grade inflation all the time. So there's always conversations around that, like, what does a grade mean? And how do, how do we ensure that there's consistency with that? I mean, those are all important conversations, and I do think that's something that I can speak to. I don't know if this is the right time to do that, because it's related to grading and assessment.
We'll pick up the grading.
Well, I think more along where, when we go in front of the parents to discuss this, that's going to be a question that they're going to ask.
Absolutely.
They're going to want to know, so.
Yeah. And I also would add that under the traditional grading system, there's the illusion of consistency. There's just as much inconsistency between staff on 190 or ABC scale as there is in our current methodology. The difference is, we continue to go back to staff and have the conversation around consistency. We're not there yet, but we're much closer to that than we were under the 190 or ABC model. It is the illusion that exists under a traditional grading system that, that people fall subject to, that isn't really there.
And that's part of professional work that faculty need to do, is they need to be given the opportunity and the time to be able to calibrate. And calibration is something that, it does take time. And you see, you know, I, I'll use the math department as an example at the high school. The math department at the high school, they calibrate all the time. So they're sitting down with tests, geometry tests, and having conversations. Their common assessments that they give, talking about, talking about the, the assessment itself and where students are in their learning, and then, and then how to adjust appropriately the curriculum moving ahead. So that takes time, but that calibration is part of that effort to make sure that there is some level of consistency with, with the grading piece.
So I'm just, what I mean, well, what I'm, my end goal is, when this is brought out to the public, that, keep in mind that the illusion to them is reality.
Yes.
So we have to kind of break through that wall of.
Agree.
Of illusion.
Yeah.
Saying, you know, just because I know, you know, an honors class versus a, a regular class, they're going to have different ways of grading. I just know they are. They expect a little more in an honors class. So, you know, I, I teach in a college, and I grade differently with different students. I, I do it myself. So I know it's, it's challenging, because you really want everyone on an even playing field, but if they're not putting in, and even the math, they're not putting in the same amount of effort, therefore, the grades aren't always the same. So, but yeah, that's, that's just the challenge I foresee when this comes out on a wider scale.
Couple of questions that are less contentious, hopefully rapid fire, and also a suggestion. In some topics in the past, Jim, we've all sent questions to you ahead of time so that you can know what they are in, in developing the presentation. It seems like this might be a helpful next step for board members before the.
I think that would be great, UC. The, the point tonight was to lay a common foundation. And so as we move toward the assessment practices presentation, it would be great if the school board would do exactly what Denise did and put out a question that we can build from, and then we can respond. We can do the basic kind of presentation, and then we can customize the presentation to the needs of the board. So if that's something you, you want to do as a board, please send, send the questions between now and the next board meeting, and we'll make sure we address them.
And then, I thought this was a, a great first presentation. Thank you, Suzanne. Couple of rapid-fire questions. Trying to understand, so it's mandated at the state level, but where are their universal competencies or versus customized? So I'm thinking state, district, school, department, teacher. Where is it, does the decision, and how large of a range is there, would you say, within the state, say?
Should we have, so we have the common course, common core standards, and then we have the common, then we have state standards as well. And then depending on what our curriculum is, we, like, for instance, the science curriculum, we utilize the Next Gen Science as well. So, so depending, so all of, you know, those pieces are part of, the state gives us standards that we, that we implement. There's the common core standards, which we look at and determine what's appropriate for our students at Oyster River. And then, and then we have other standards that we look at to see how we can, how we can push those into the curriculum as well. So does that answer your question?
That answers the question. There's no, there's no international, national, state, or commonality to how each school system in New Hampshire has addressed competencies. It's very much, here are the standards, here's the research, you take it and interpret it to your district. My very good friend, Mark LePlante, just finished his dissertation and got his doctorate on research on competencies in New Hampshire, and he was able to document it's all over the place in terms of what each school system does. So even though the state provides the standards, and even though we have common core, and there are research-based competencies out there that we use, it's, our competencies would look different than Dover's, would look different than Rochester's, would look different than, you know, White Mountain.
Interesting. And where does knowledge of particular content fit in? So forms of government, for example. Do our students need to know about different forms of government by the time they graduate?
Mm-hmm. That's a requirement of the.
Yeah.
And, but that's not a competency.
So again, the competencies are broad overarching, the content, the specifics, that would be a learning target. So that's within, that's. So that's within that's actually layered within it. So the way that the competencies are written, again, so you have your competency, which is your broad and overarching, you have your standard, which gets narrow, and then you have your learning targets, which are even which are even narrower, which would be what you're what you're speaking.
And that also, we have discussion on the the content, the learning targets.
Oh, yes. Yeah. So that might be a competency around being able to understand various forms of government and apply them to, you know, the various countries in the world. And then underneath that, you'd talk about the United States, you talk about Russia, you talk about Kenya, you know, and various forms in that way. So there's a very specific law in New Hampshire that says we have to do that. But if we were going to do it as a competency, it would be much broader and it would fall underneath as a skill.
The hard part with competencies is that you don't want it to get too specific because then you end up with something like, you know, 100 competencies.
Hundred and forty four standards.
And then you're it's unrealistic at that point to think that you're going to be able to build standards and learning targets for 100 competencies. So we start with
The elementary staff and my after my first year, I'll never forget this, one of the veteran teachers said, so Superintendent Morse, what did you learn in your first year working for Oyster River? I said, to ask for laughs, because I really burned out the elementary and they were so hard at trying to do it. And at the end, I realized I took the exact opposite approach that I should have because it was really overwhelming them.
Last question. Where would parents find these online? So when I go to Schoology, it looks like some of the classes have them listed, some of them don't.
So that's the piece that they are online. They haven't been, we need to update them. That's something that Becca and Jay and I have been talking about is updating the competencies since we've been back from the pandemic. But they are online. If you go to our website, there's a link to competencies and it talks about has definitions. It talks, there are links to the middle school competencies and the high school competencies. There's a variety of different resources there also for people that they can go do to be able to access more information. Jay has some videos that he where they talk about that the faculty have made around competencies. So there's a variety of resources. Again, that that needs to be updated and looked at. And that's what we're going to be starting over the summer is really digging into that and making sure that the language is similar, making sure that there's consistency for families and for kids.
So curriculum, parents.
There's a quick link right on the front page.
Right on the front page, it says it's it'll say competency based education.
Right. And a lot of that work was done in the summer of 2019 to pull together both the background information for parents as well as the competencies themselves.
So I know I've seen the high school ones, but I don't know if the middle school ones are published, at least not on their site.
So they're they're in there. I pulled them up. I don't know how I can I'm happy to 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 dig into that a little bit with you after, if you'd like.
Oh, no, it's fine. I just I remember seeing the high school ones and it's a very long document.
Yes.
But I I've seen the videos on the middle school one, but I don't think I've seen the equivalent very long document for the middle school.
Okay.
So I just, when I looked, I didn't find it.
Okay.
We don't have to do that now. But I did have two questions. So with the reassessment cycle, how do teachers typically handle that with, you know, we want to cover this chunk of material within the course or we need to cover this chunk of material within the course? And if we get into a reassessment loop that takes several cycles, then we're behind. How do we balance reassessment versus the need to, we need to move forward?
So for some for some, again, that's going to be individualized. So what they so they will continue to move. And if there are kids that continue to struggle with certain areas or need more time, then they will address those kids specifically.
During flex time and bug cat time, Heather. So the classes and unless the entire class misses a concept, then it'll be dealt with during flex time and bug cat time, which we've now built into the master schedules of both schools. So that time is available. And at the high school, they have a organizing piece of software where students can sign in for assistance or teachers can invite students in for assistance. And so it's really worked extremely well pre COVID. Now that we're back full time, we're back into gearing up and using that software. During that semester break, we extended the the semester in order to provide the built in relearning time. That software was absolutely a godsend because the teachers then could monitor the kids coming in and they could invite them. And if kids didn't show up, they could call down to Becca's office and say, this child's not showing up. And administration would chase chase after them, contact the family directly. So it's a good example of how across a building in a the the administration and staff work together to intervene to make sure that the kids had the opportunity to relearn and be reassessed.
And my second question was when our graduates transitioned to college, this reassessment cycle is not something built into a lot of programs? How are the students faring with, you know, learning about their test anxiety and sort of it's a one and done and we move on kind of environment at the college level?
So this that's a great question. The students that I've spoken to that have come back to to school have been have have not had an issue with it. I do think that that it, yeah, I haven't heard that it's an issue. I do know that in the college, I have I live with a college professor, so we have these conversations all the time. But I do know that the idea of relearning and reassessment is happening just everywhere now for high schools. It's it's very prevalent. And so it's not it's not putting Oyster River students in any kind of a different different place than other students are that are going to college. And I do think that and Liv, you were gonna, I saw your hand.
Um, what kind
Not liking you, Chen.
I know. The higher like level classes you get to, like in your, like, they slowly like start drifting away from relearning and reassessing, like, they'll have it to some extent, but it gets like less and less as you go on through like the year. So like your freshman year, most of your classes will probably let you, to some extent, relearn or reassess that sort of thing. But as you go through, like, to once you get to like the higher level, like courses and stuff like that, like your junior and senior year, instead of like relearning and reassessing, teachers may pull you into like flex or something and just through go through things with you and be like, you're missing something here. Like on your next assignment, make sure to include that, that sort of thing, instead of like completely retaking a test or something like that. So it kind of like drifts a little bit away from that. So it's kind of like a more what I think will be like smooth transition. I mean, I'm not in college yet, but that's
I do think also, kids, their freshman and their sophomore year, through the flex model, are learning how to access faculty and and how to have those conversations with faculty and engage in that. And I think that that puts our students at a huge advantage because then by the time they're juniors and seniors, they're being proactive in their learning and advocating for themselves, which is what you really need to be able to do when you go to college.
So Heather, also, prior to COVID, we were on an other 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 year schedule of surveying alumni. And so now that we're coming out of COVID, we do to do that again. And that feedback has been invaluable in terms of quantifying how we're doing as a school by getting feedback from graduates. And so we'll we'll start that up again.
Is that part of the accreditation process?
No, actually, it was board motivated. They the board asked probably by second year here, if we could get into a cycle of getting a real sense of how our graduates were doing. It was a time when we were doing, we're doing really good and patting ourselves on the back without a whole lot of documentation to show that we were doing really good. And so that was part of the plan to determine objectively, were we serving the children well? And so those those were really informative. And I remember because it was every other year, Todd or Suzanne would come in and say, I forgot the budget for this, can we find the money? Because it was this like, because it wasn't a consistent yearly thing, we would skip the budget process, but we'd always find the money to do it because I just found it an incredibly valuable tool. Good feedback for the board, good feedback for the community and good feedback for the staff. So we'll start that up again.
All right. So the next step here is that you would like to collect questions from the board.
Yeah. So the focus of the next one would be to do the grading assessment component, which again is always going to be more, you know, intense, which is 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 OK. But if in addition to the structure that Suzanne already has in place in terms of that presentation, if you all have specific questions that you'd like, you know, us to focus in on, we'd be glad to do that. So just send your questions to Wendy and I'll let her know they're coming and we'll collect them and Suzanne and I will look through them and try to make sure that it's either already embedded in our presentation and if it's not, we'll make sure we have those answers for that presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Question, sure. Sorry, I remembered. So we're talking about the middle and high school. What are the elementary schools doing right now? Is that standards, not competencies?
Actually, a blend.
Yeah, they're we're starting the we will be starting the conversation with elementary around competencies or standards based.
We've been doing that, Heather, since that awful year where I burned everybody out. I I really didn't have the heart to say, let's revisit them right then. So as we're resurrecting new curriculum around science and social studies and now language arts, we're shifting from that standard based model to a competency based model. And it's being very well received by the classroom teachers.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Dr. Morse.
All right. So I have a bunch of things. First of all, I'd like to invite Andy to the podium. Just again, in terms of laying foundation, it was several years ago, Brian can probably tell us exactly how many, we formed our first cooperative team with Portsmouth four years ago. You heard Kara Sullivan at a recent meeting really sing the praises of that cooperative team and what it did for her son. We have a cooperative team. So Portsmouth hosts football. We have a cooperative team in girls hockey. We're the host. And Andy came came forward. Portsmouth has asked us if we would be willing to form a collaborative with them on a spirit team, which we used to call cheerleading. And so I turned it over to Andy.
Yeah, not that you guys want to see another PowerPoint, but I just have a few slides to show you. Matt and Heather, welcome. Looking forward to working with you guys and getting to know you a little bit better. I guess, you know, Dr. Morse kind of laid everything out. So far, what we're looking for, I guess what I am asking tonight is that the board consider approving a Oyster River and Portsmouth High School Cooperative and Fall Spirit. The Oyster River School Board has already met and has approved their end of that. That is an NHI requirement that both school boards have to agree. They have met and are all for it. I think this is a great opportunity, adding this cooperative to give just another opportunity for our our students to have another extracurricular activity that they they might not already be able to be a part of. So that's kind of what we're looking looking for the board tonight.
Andy, when we first started this with Portsmouth and football, it was a very long involved process. Can you talk about what the process is here?
Yeah. Yeah, I actually have a slide on that, so I will go over that. I just and Dr. Morse did touch upon the cooperatives that we have with them, but this this slide shows the, you know, they're pretty well participating. And we had 27 kids playing football this year. So, you know, that number's really grown over the year, 14 girls hockey players. So the the spirit team is not a gender specific team, so it's open to boys and girls. They would cheer at Portsmouth, Oyster River football games, but they also compete. There's four or five competitions throughout the year that they would be involved in. And there is a state championship at the end of the the season for Fall Spirit. So cost to the district would be wouldn't be any cost to the district. It would be similar to what we do with football in that the participants would be paying Portsmouth High School directly to 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 be able to be a part of the the spirit squad. Portsmouth is telling me that would be about a $300 fee for per family to participate. Kind of getting back to what Dr. Morse was talking about, the the process for, you know, having a spirit team, like I said, starts with both school boards agreeing. We'd send off that application that you've seen in your packets. Will go to the NHIAA Spirit Committee. They would vote to approve that. It would then go to the Classification Committee and then goes to the Executive Council for final approval. So we do have a, you know, this is just the the first stop. It is a little bit of a process to
Andy, would we have the team if all that was a go, would we have a team in the fall?
Yes.
Enough time to do it.
Yeah, we do have time. You know, we're we're on the kind of the speed track here. We need to to get going, but we do have time to get it to get it underway. So, you know, that's basically the, you know, what we're asking for in a nutshell here, but I'd take any questions if you have any.
Go ahead.
So there's a lot of similarities to football, obviously. One of the questions that came up, as I recall, was when we have a direct funding from the family for the student, should there be a need? Would we have the resources? How would we handle that need? We've we've made
Yeah, so we've had some, we've had those, you know, we want kids to be able to participate. If the family has demonstrated a need, we've always helped them out.
Okay.
So we wouldn't, we wouldn't, we wouldn't, you know, let a kid not be able to participate because of financial reasons, no.
Thanks.
When it comes to that $300,
Yes.
I'm assuming that's coaching uniforms.
Yep. So that, yeah, that basically pays, you know, the coach's salary over there. They figure the costs out and we do the same with ice hockey here for 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 a girl's ice hockey with them. It's a per player, you know, we add up all the costs and divide it by the number of players that you have.
Would you expect a large out of pocket above that 300?
No, that would be it. That would be it. That, you know, that's, like I said, that would that kind of covers uniforms, it covers coaches' salaries and, you know, transportation, those kind of things.
Andy, because it's a coed team, it doesn't affect L9 numbers or anything like
It won't. And actually, you know, it is it is coed, but it is, you know, generally female dominated. So I think it actually, you know, helps us in that regard.
And this is, it's not cheerleading anymore. It's spirit. It's still the flying up in the air and
Yes.
There's pretty good chance for injury. So I assume that, you know, the trainers at the game, or there's somebody at a non football game of they're competing, that there's medical
Athletic trainers and Fall Spirit coaches have to be certified.
Right.
It's not just hiring a coach off the street and it they're, you know, it's not like finding a soccer coach, for example, nothing against a soccer coach, but it's a little bit more involved to become
Right.
a spirit coach is a little bit more, you know, training that may have to go into that.
In some respects, the injuries can be just as bad as a as football or any other sport.
Absolutely.
What is our sense of our the current interest among our students? Are they excited for this possibility?
Yeah. You know, every year I've had kids or parents asking me about it. You know, I think we probably, I would anticipate we may have 10 kids that go over there next year.
And I know we had a we had a dance team during the winter season. Would this supplant that or would that remain?
No, that would remain. The dance is a club right now.
Okay.
They've approached me about kind of falling under the athletic umbrella, too. I'd kind of like to see, you know, it continue the way it's been. But, you know, that could be a possibility down the road, too. I mean, you saw the at the basketball games, it was it was it was it added a lot to, I think, the the atmosphere.
Oh, yeah.
So
This would be a fall sport.
This would be in the fall. Yeah, strictly in the fall. There is winter spirit, but I don't think that that is something that we would good, you know, pursue right now. It's just this is a natural fit because, you know, they cheer at the football games. We're a cooperative with Portsmouth and football. It's just right now is a natural fit. You know, we'll see how it goes if
Portsmouth's been an awesome partner both
They really have.
directions. We've really made a great choice in partnering with them.
Agreed. Yeah, it's been it's been fabulous. Football and and girls hockey has been it's great.
So, Michael, we need a motion.
Well, I think there's more questions still. Is there, do we have a lacrosse cooperative as well?
We do, we have that with Newmarket.
Okay.
You know, and they're great to work with too. We just haven't gotten the numbers from them. You know, I think we have one boy from Newmarket this year and one girl. So we, you know, we're hoping to see that kind of grow.
And those are both hosted at Oyster River?
We host those, yeah. Yeah, I mean, we're 99% of the team. You know, we were hoping to get some more numbers from that, but we just, it hasn't really panned out yet, but hopefully in the future it will.
Yeah. Denise?
Just to emphasize, I'm reading through the, like, the contract that students are responsible for their own transportation to Portsmouth.
They are.
Because I know, you know, we've gotten some letters recently, it's like, "Well, why don't we?" And it's like, "Well, this is, you know, this is part of the, being part of this cooperative is that, you know, transportation, that students are responsible for their own transportation."
And it is difficult, but, you know, you know, we've, transportation is hard enough for, to get our teams to games. So, you know, providing a bus every day for practice is really tough. So, yeah, that's, that is definitely in the cooperative agreement.
I have the really easy questions. I'm not familiar. The Clipper Cats, is that an amalgamation?
Yeah.
That's fun. And then what do the uniforms look like?
So the...
I mean, in general, you don't have to describe the uniforms.
Well, so our girls' hockey uniforms are kind of a combination. The Portsmouth football uniforms, they're red and they say Clippers on them, but the helmets say Clipper Cats. So those are pretty pricey uniforms and they're not purchased all that often, so we'll see the next time around if Portsmouth's interested in, you know, combining, you know, colors and that. They are the lead school, so generally, we do it with lacrosse, they wear our uniforms. So.
Thanks.
All right, so we would need a motion to enter into a cooperative with Portsmouth for Fall Spirit.
And make a motion to the Athletic Director, enter into a cooperative agreement with Portsmouth for Spirit.
Motion from Brian? A second from Matt? Any more discussion? All those in favor? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor?
Super, thank you very much.
All right. All right.
I don't normally read from my phone, but this is from our contractor, Andre Coats from Bowen Construction. It just reiterates some of what we already heard tonight. Andre is sharing that, and this will be in Friday update. We've entered the destruction phase, we know that, it's pretty wonderful to watch. Prior to last week, abatement work, and this is really important because we did get a concerned parent who was concerned about the dust and whether it included asbestos and hazardous materials. So prior to last week, abatement work to encapsulate and remove any hazardous materials was ongoing since early March. A company was hired at the start of our project to take samples and identify asbestos that would be exposed during demolition of the old middle school. In previous decades, all asbestos was, that was visible and exposed, was removed. However, asbestos products are often covered up by walls and construction and so forth. And so the contractor went through the building and exposed those spaces that aren't seen by the eye. They did identify additional asbestos and they removed it before any of that demolition occurred. So just to be clear with everyone, even though there's a lot of dust going on on the site and will continue to be even as we build the fields, it is being watered down by an employee continuously and there is no hazardous materials in the air, it's just dust. Having said that, we now know that the ventilation system in new school works wonderfully because on one particular day, the wind was going right in the right direction and the smell of the old school got into the new school. Jay was quick on the phone, he got the fire department up, they were able to identify the source and they went through the building and said it was safe. So we did have that bit of a hiccup that happened. We also, on a different day, again, this ventilation system is pretty doggone powerful in the new school, the cooks decided that it was hamburger day and the wind was just right and it took the hamburger ventilation smell and put it into the system so the whole school smelt like McDonald's for a day. So we are learning a lot about the new school and its new ventilation system, and I guess from these two experiences, we can say, "It works well, maybe too well." So, you know, in terms of, as Jay shared, one of the wonderful things that's going on in this project is the recycling of product. So if you went onto the site right now, you'd see a huge pile of steel, you'd see a huge pile of waste, you'd see a huge pile of rocks, you'd see a huge pile of drywall and things like that. And if you watch the process, it's really incredible because it's these two giant machines just sorting as they're pulling stuff down and putting it in its proper pile. And then just in terms of just the recycling issue, I just want to again say, what an incredible job Jim Rizicky did in repurposing the furniture and the generator in the old school because that was an incredible effort. And that literally kept tons of waste out of our landfills as different schools needed those materials and were grateful to have them and come and get them. So in terms of this whole destruction phase, I just want everybody to know it's being done as safely as possible and with all those safety protocols in place. So that's what I wanted to add to that report tonight. I also wanted to share that we have a mini ribbon cutting. The revision energy that installed all of our solar panels on the roof and over the parking area wanted to have a ribbon cutting of its own. That is set for April 20th at, from 1:00 to 2:00 PM. And they've invited, you know, dignitaries and so forth. If anybody from the school board can attend, that would be amazing. I know that it's really hard for Michael as chair to, you know, find time in the middle of a day, so if there's an opportunity that you can attend, could you let me know? And I would just designate some speaking time for a board member to, you know, celebrate this amazing achievement. One of the things that our architect shared with me is I can't be so definitive in saying it's a net positive school because we won't know how net positive it is until a year from now when they've done their determination of whether we've reached that goal. So we are potentially the most net positive school in New England. And so I'll, they gave me some phraseology to use that would be more appropriate at this point. So if you are available, just let me know and I'll make sure there's a space. If only one of you can attend, I may just hand you a microphone and say a few words. And I'm sure if Michael can attend, of course, I would give the microphone to him, or Denise. So let me know. I think this is a pretty cool event. They're going to use it, of course, in their, look at us, kind of contractor, we do great solar energy work. The architect is doing the same thing. Granite State Plumbing is doing the same thing. You're going to see, and EverSource is doing the same thing. So you're going to see this middle school pop up unexpectedly as you're going through things and it's just basically, everybody wants to get credit for what an outstanding project this was and is. The other thing that is new as of today, which is why it's not in your packet, is the State Board of Education is going to hold its monthly meeting at our new middle school. So that will happen on May 12th from 9:00 to 3:00. And you may recall way back 10 years ago, Anne Lane was a school board member on this body. She's on the state board and they're pretty excited about coming to the school. Suzanne and Jay will host them. Unfortunately, this is a time where I'm not in state, so Suzanne will represent the district and Jay, of course, the building. If any of you would like to be introduced to the board, the state board, please, please come. And I think this is pretty, a pretty great event that they are seeking us out because, of course, the commissioner's seen the building and he was pretty excited to show this building off to state board members. So that's that.
That's a school day. Will there be any change to the school operations that day?
Yeah, they'll take over the music hall for that day. So the music people will stay in their classrooms as opposed to use the music hall.
That's a public meeting?
It is a public meeting.
So we have, we'll have non-school community people coming into the building, into student areas that day?
Just to the music hall. I mean, the board will get a tour. Yeah, I hadn't thought about that, Michael. But that's what typically happens across the state, they go into schools. So I can have extra presence of Durham PD that day.
Not knowing who's going to show up?
Yeah. Going back to Denise's report on Toma Brown, I agree with her, it was really super outstanding. And Toma will be coming back next school year in person. So our goal was to bring her in this school year, but obviously COVID continued to the point where we couldn't. She made a remarkable connection with the students. I was actually in the music hall when Andre Van Owen was teaching strings and Toma Brown was interacting with our students on the giant screen that's in there. It was amazing how close a connection she made with the kids in that very brief time she was with them, about 45 to 50 minutes. It's pretty incredible. So looking forward to her coming in person to the district next year. Just giving you an update on the opening dedication ceremony, we have started sending out invitations to state and local dignitaries to see if they're availability. And then in terms of the middle school fees, there's a chart in your packet. Essentially what I did is I looked at what the similar costs were for similar rooms at the high school and duplicated them. So the auditorium and the music hall would have the same fee. The gymnasium, I think, was a little bit less because of capacity, classrooms the same and so forth as you went through that. So that's an addendum that the board has already approved that chart of accounts at the beginning of the school year. And since we're getting requests to use the middle school facility, we wanted to make sure that we were doing the board's will. And so I would need a motion on that as an addendum to the report, Michael, so we can be clear as to what we're charging people to use that facility.
So this would just be for the remainder of this school year? And then there will be a separate schedule of fees for all of district facilities for next school year at a future meeting?
Exactly. Yep.
Brian?
Motion to accept the middle school fees as presented.
There's a motion from Brian?
I'll second.
From Heather?
I have one question. Just in terms of any, these are for outside groups, so if we're talking about some sort of in-the-district group, they, refresh my memory, they don't have a charge if there was, I mean, I don't know, but something within our district?
Right, yeah. So it's, obviously we don't charge ourselves. And then if it's the recreation program, maximum velocity, and Oyster River Youth Association, we have foregone rental fees from them with the exception of the lighting, which we do charge if they want to turn them on because it costs about 80 bucks an hour to do that.
Yeah.
And that was a decision the board made.
Right.
Two school years ago, I believe.
And we charge them for any custodial fees that might be incurred outside of a normal school activity, correct?
Yeah, that is correct.
It would be similar for the concert hall if there was a group that, I don't know, I can't think of something off the top of my head, but if it was something that was within, like, I guess if the rec center wanted to have a musical program or something like that as opposed to an athletic program.
Sure. They would be competing against their own music staff and the pecking order is our staff, students first. Then these organizations, we've talked about nonprofits and then for-profits. So if the space is available, for sure they can use it. Yeah.
Given the uniqueness and attractiveness of the auditorium, the music hall, this may actually be...
Conservative right now.
Conservative, so, and I guess beyond the fee, have we thought through how we might vet, you know, a promoter? So for example, a music promoter that might want to bring in several music acts to utilize that hall. I'm not saying that's a bad thing, but, you know, it's not a known, you know, group serving the community that we have an ongoing relationship with necessarily. How might we handle those sorts of requests?
Sure. So I don't have an answer to that tonight, Dan, which is, you know, basically because we haven't had that request yet. But, you know, it would have to be in line with our mission, you know, so we're not going to hold rock concerts in that space. It's going to be music performances, Elizabethan Theater, TED Talk-type activities. So, you know, when Jim Rizicky has the application, they have to say what the purpose is and all of that's right there. So if something stands out, we just wouldn't approve it.
Yeah, we would reserve the right to deny a request.
Absolutely.
I mean...
We do that with everything.
Most reasons, yeah, okay.
Yeah, and we can revisit the rental fee when we do the comprehensive list in the fall. I just wanted to get something on paper now, so, because we're getting requests now and I wanted to make sure I could act on them, you know, in an efficient fashion.
Jim, is Jim Rizicky still doing all the space requests, approving and denying? Because there used to be another person who would do that.
It was, his administrative assistant did that. We've moved that into the SAU office and it's being done. So they still go through Jim Rizicky, but the paperwork part of it is being done at our office.
All right, so, I'm sorry, was there another question?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay. So all those in favor of approving the middle school fees for the rest of the school year, current school year? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor that fee schedule's approved?
And that is the end of my report, Michael.
You had a note for UNH Community-wide Communications Service results?
You're right, it's not the end of my report. So the communications, a subgroup of the Communications Committee, including myself and Michael and UC, were trying to take the 42 pages of comments and try to make them usable and practical. And parent Amy Sterndale, who is a communications expert and an incredible parent and dedicated Oyster River supporter, has volunteered her professional time now through three different meetings with UC and Michael and I, and most recently volunteered to carry it even further by acting as a consultant to the district. And this is just an incredible gift. She's offering her time and her expertise for nothing. And I cannot tell you how much I respect Amy. She's been part of my professional life now for the full decade I've been here and continues to be that person in the district who just steps forward when there's a need in the district. And so Michael has taken her raw data, that she categorized all of those hundreds upon hundreds of comments and created a, what's the name of the graph, Michael?
A set of Pareto charts?
I think you should take it from here.
So Amy has gone through all the, I don't know, 700 or 800 comments, there were on those 40-something pages, and categorized them by theme. And I did the easy part of just trying to organize that categorization. Amy is taking that and some other insights from the Communications Committee, from Superned's Communication Committee from last year to propose some direction of where we go next. I think we may be able to put together at least the comments part for the next meeting to distribute to the board.
All right, we can do that. And I also would add that the next... And I also would add that the next step in this process is to bring it to the administrative team on May 3rd. And she's going to put on a 90-minute workshop because the tightness of, of our group needs to be now more open. We need to share the results of the work and so forth with all of you, with the administrative team, because that's going to inform direction. And, so that's the next step, is to take the work that we've been doing and, and put it in, in the public eye.
Thanks.
Just relative to the community survey, and I'm not sure, it's unclear to me if the community survey was part of that?
No.
Or not, not yet, okay. Because I really want to thank those in the community who took the time to respond to the survey. And what I got out of it was, there's a lot of similarities between what the community says and what the parents and faculty staff that did the previous survey, particularly regarding the website and calendar and that sort of thing. I think, though, that it's really important as, and I would hope that the communications committee, as it moves forward, particularly will pay attention to some of the comments that were on the community survey that pertain to, I'm just going to read two of them real quick right now. "I have long felt sad that there is little emphasis placed on community members who do not currently have children in the schools. I think it is often assumed that we are not interested, but I am. I think the schools can promote a sense of community throughout the area, and then this would be a good thing." I'll just read that one. So, the point being is that there definitely is interest in the community from folks that don't have children in the school and to please, as you're looking at ways of revamping our communication, to remember these folks as well.
Heather?
Denise, just double-check my answer. The breakdown, no one has ever not been able to hear me in my entire life. The breakdown is, that you're talking about is the user survey, not the community survey that we just got in the packet.
Right, so the community survey that's in the packet for this week only has 11 pages of comments. Over a larger number of questions. There were some of the questions that went to the, the parent and staff survey last fall that had, like, 300 comments just on one question, so.
Yeah, I know, some of those comments are mine.
So we're trying to put some objectivity to that analysis.
Wanted to underscore, it's, I'm excited to be engaging with the, the staff who have worked in communications for these number of years. Internally, we know that there's a lack of capacity, that there are not yet sort of templates and standard operating procedures that can make their work more efficient. And so, we know even through individual conversations that, that the, the staff themselves have been pushing for solutions, have been identifying gaps and, and working creatively within what they can do in their sort of limited domain to move this forward. And so, what we're really trying to do is marry the feedback that we've gotten from the community with the good ideas and the resources that are already on staff.
Okay.
All right.
Now I'm done.
Okay. All right. Sue, that brings us to the business administrator section.
Good evening. You have the latest update on the current year's budget. A couple of things to note, we do, in there, we do have that $523,000 Health Trust Premium Holiday. There's a couple of staff, we've encumbered most all of the salaries for the year. Subline is a bit over, but we do have a balance in the salaries and that part of that is due to some long-term leaves that aren't being paid. So, remember, we are looking at covering hopefully the $900,000 and the $500,000 that we projected when we put our budget out there. I think we're trending in a good direction and hopefully be able to do that. Questions?
I would just add that the first meeting of the new finance committee will be on April 21st at 6:30. So that would be Brian, Michael, and Heather.
Maybe, pending action in a few items.
Okay. Always go to that. Clarative, I'm done.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. All right, Olivia?
Yeah. It's okay. I mean, I'll talk about him. Okay, I'll just screw it over. I have a few things for tonight. Salt Hosts are now called Earth Fest, which used to be known as Winter Fest, but now is our spring pep rally. That's going to be on April 22nd and it's going to be celebrating Earth Day and school spirit. That is instead of our Winter Fest. There will be an email sent out shortly soon to advisories about signups for the pep rally activities. Just an update on the senior corps. Seniors have been enjoying the space. I think I said that a little bit about that last week. And I just wanted to add in again that it's nice not having the, like, yellow caution tape around it. Last Thursday, all advisories watched and participated in a digital citizenship presentation training sort of thing. I was able to talk with Senate today during their meeting and I heard from all the different grade levels throughout that. And their remarks on it was that they knew a lot of what was in the presentation, but great discussions were brought up with their advisories afterwards for the majority of those in there. So, that was the overall thing, I thought was kind of cool. The end of the quarter is Thursday or tomorrow. And so, with the end of, of quarter three, there will be a coffee house hosted by Mouth of the River, our magazine. I don't have any dates yet, but I will update you when I know more. And as Miss Knowly said, prom tickets go on sale tomorrow. There's only 380 tickets, so make sure to go get them if you want to go for juniors and seniors. And then Senate is hosting a coin war, which, they're raising money with this coin war for a spring social, which is similar to what we did this past fall. The senior class hosted a fall festival, so there'll be, like, yard games, there'll be music if people want to dance, that sort of thing, snacks, you know. In this coin war, each class will compete against each other with spare change, add coins to your own class jars to go ahead and add paper bills into other class jars to subtract money from them. The containers are currently set up in the main office, the front office. And I believe during, I think it's Wednesday, or Tuesday and Wednesday lunches coming up, they're going to try and have the coins move more towards the cafeterias so those who aren't constantly leaving the building will be able to access those. And then, there's also flyers posted around the school that have the same information on them. And then, lastly, I just wanted to congratulate all the, of the class of 2022, NHIAA scholar athletes. And that's all I have for tonight. Do you guys have any questions?
Thank you, Olivia. All right, we have three things on the unanimous consent agenda tonight. Are there any of those anybody would like to remove for separate discussion? Nope, all right. So then I will move approval of the unanimous consent agenda, which includes nomination of the non-tenured, approval of the superintendent's nomination of non-tenure track contract professional staff members for the next school year. Approving Friday, June 17th, 2022, not 2021 as it says on the agenda, as the last day of school for the school year. And approving an Oyster River High School maternity leave of absence from the beginning of the school year to November 25th, 2022.
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor of the unanimous consent agenda? Seven in favor, the student rep in favor, June 17th is the last day of school. All right, so, moving on to discussion and action items, you have the committee assignment recommendations that I put together after some discussion with Denise and Jim. And there are some things that are a little bit, just to provide a little bit of context here, some of these things, there were only one person or the right number of people that requested to participate in that group and that made it really easy. Some places that was not the case. I took the liberty of refining the description for the, the negotiations committee to be staff and bargaining negotiations. There may be other things that come up that, that wouldn't necessarily fall into that group that we may want a separate group for. We'll see if those arise. And then, the number of representatives to other groups, in some cases, we adjusted those numbers. And, and then, I don't know if we will have a separate business administrator search committee later, but I didn't, we didn't discuss that last week. And the thing that's also, other thing that's not on here is that we did not discuss DEIJ Coordinator Search Committee. So, if, I think we should discuss that now, the business administrator we probably don't need to discuss now, that can, that can come down the road as that process gets underway.
It would be great if the board would take action on who they want to represent them. Ideally, it would be two board members and this would be a commitment of probably no more than five meetings.
I'm sorry, which, which position are we talking about right now?
The DEIJ Coordinator.
DEIJ.
Yeah. So, so I guess let's, let's, let's talk about that one first. Brian?
I'd be interested in being on that if the opportunity arises.
I'd be interested as well. Yeah, I think it'd be easier to figure out who isn't interested in being on that because I am interested as well.
Is three too many?
No, as long as it's not a majority of the board, I basically have given up on trying to contain the size of this committee. Really, it's just like so many people are interested and I'm kind of thinking in my head that I'll adjust the size, sort of the way I did the elementary principal searches where even if the committee has 12 or 14 people on it, there won't, there won't be enough time for 12 or 14 people to ask questions. So we may say each group, it does, like Nate, the person who's asking the question and the other person can just be listening carefully to the answers that are being given. So, three people is fine by me.
No offense to UC, but I think you have a conflict being on this because you already work with it and I don't think it would be good optics for this district to have you on this committee. I think your input is, is important, but I just think your connection right now is a little too close to, to be on this committee, to hiring somebody who you may be connected to through your work with DEIJ.
I'd be interested in the board's thoughts on that. I do not have direct professional work with the DEIJ, in the DEIJ realm. Like Denise, I've been an active member of the committee. And I think there are also benefits to having continuity with how the committee has come to conceive the position. But I'm, I'm open to others.
I don't disagree with that, but I just have to remember the optics to the taxpayers.
I'm thrilled that you would be on there as well. I think that in general, there's a, we've had conversations about ensuring that it's not, you know, only a choir, the choir, or only a group of narrow, a narrow group of like-minded people who are on the committee.
Could you elaborate a little more on the, not, not sort of the optics, but like the technical sense of the conflict you're worried about?
She currently works with one of, some of the biggest groups that we'll be probably pulling people from. And I don't, it'd be the same as, you know, me being involved in a group of people that I work directly with. You know, it's just not, I just, it's, it's already been brought up in, in public session and I just think it's a, it's a good fit, to be honest with you. I think you would be a great fit, but I think your connection to UNH right now with who, where some of these people will be coming from, I think it's a little too close.
So, we, we did evaluate with external counsel that concern about the relationship between the Carce Center and New Hampshire Listens when it was raised at public comment. And on the advice of counsel, there is not a, a conflict of interest.
For the voting, but there's optics involved here, too.
I'm telling you that the...
I'm not even talking the legal aspect because I don't care what, what the, the legal aspect is. But it looks to the board and somebody that connected comes into, into this process. So I just think it's a little uncomfortable, a little too close.
Heather?
Oh, I was going to let Denise, I just had my hand up because I thought Denise had something to say, but I also have something to say. So, do you want to go first?
Oh, I, I, I just agree with, I agree with UC that I feel that it's important for someone to be on the committee who has been engaged in the DEIJ work for the last year and brings that perspective of all those conversations and, you know, everything that has been discussed during that committee work. So I fully support UC's participation on this search committee. And I believe she'll be, I believe she'll be impartial. I, I don't, I don't have any concerns whatsoever about any sort of conflict of interest or whatever.
The issue that was raised just didn't have any bona fides behind it. It, you know, the Carce School is a big school with many divisions and UC is not anywhere near New Hampshire Listens, which is the accusation that was made that, and we don't even know if anybody from that organization is going to apply for the position. So, I think, as Denise does, you know, the optics are from one person, not from the community in general, and maybe it's more than one person, but the, the truth is that there is no conflict there. And to say to a board member, you can't participate because somebody thinks there's a conflict, is just not fair to the seven of you.
I just want to emphasize, one of the advantages, excuse me, of the, the committee search process is that it necessarily lends a lot of different perspectives and voices to what is ultimately a recommendation to the district. So, there is no inherent authority within the committee. And, you know, generally, we want people who have a particular expertise, background, and experience relevant to the position we're hiring to contribute to that. And I think UC's an excellent example of that. So, like Denise, I don't share that concern and I, I hope she'll be on the committee.
And if I just have one more thought, these committees are, they exist to support my decision, they're not making the decision. So, in the end, if there's two candidates, we're down to two candidates, it's ultimately going to be a decision that I make to bring a person forward. It's not the committee's decision. The committee's work is to make sure that the quality of the candidates that we have before us that we're considering are top-notch through an interview process, through visiting and so forth. And so, as we, as happens all the time with the board, outside of your collective wisdom here at this body, when you're on subcommittee work, you're one of those committee members, you're not the board member in the sense that you're, you have any more weight than Rebecca Noe, who's going to be on the committee as a principal. You know, you're helping me make the best decisions possible for the district. And we are very conscious about that when, and UC can tell you, I've been very clear to everybody, remember, you're helping me make decisions, you're not making the decision.
And just Matt and Heather being new, as well as anyone who is watching tonight, you know, we are so fortunate to live in the catchment area of UNH and to have a number of people working at UNH, a number of UNH employees who have students in the schools. And it would be absurd to, to identify conflict of interest whenever there were a UNH employee who sat on the board, who, you know, from working in different parts of UNH, we work with the Sustainability Institute, with the Education Department, with different projects within the Carce School. And we're so fortunate to have those connections. Within the Carce School, I currently work about 10 hours a week on solar finance as part of the community, the Center for Impact Finance. And that's very different from New Hampshire Listens, we have no contact. We have no contact, really, except for, for the big staff meetings. In additionally, in addition, I'm in the final stage of my PhD candidacy, working with folks at the Carcy School. So I don't see a conflict of interest there. And let's say, in addition, that while I was probably one of the more vocal board members pushing for the creation of this position, I've also been vocal about making sure that it's a position that works for all families in the district, that we have consistent, high-skill instruction and standards across all of the levels. So I, and have really promoted the bridging nature of our support for this work, and the importance of bridging as a skill that this person brings to, to make everyone in our district feel welcome.
I think with no legal conflict, if it was just UC alone, that would, I think the optics would be not great. But with three board members, I think that helps to mitigate the, the optics.
My decision, it's your decision, but it's also, you're gonna have to explain it if it comes up. So as long as you're comfortable with that, that's fine.
So I will add those three, Brian, UC, and Heather, as part of the recommendation for the DEIJ Coordinator Search Committee. So this is, this is now in your hands. I've done my part. So there could be, there could, at some point, we would, I appreciate a motion to approve the committee assignments, and then, and then certainly we can have some discussion. Denise?
I will make a motion to approve the committee assignments as presented with the addition of Brian, UC, and Heather on the DEIJ Coordinator Search Committee.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Denise and a second from Dan.
I would like to open discussion on the World Language Committee, and to ask the board if, if we would consider having a second member there. I'm looking at you, Matt. I think there's real value, you know, in a way, similar, Brian, to, to your concern about the other one. As a longtime proponent of the Mandarin program, even before I joined the board, I think there's value in continuity. I also think that having a parent with elementary school kids and, who can bring a fresh perspective, would be helpful.
I'd be happy to do that if that's what-
So I think that since we have a motion and a second, the proper way to do that would be for there to be an amendment.
Make a friendly amendment that we add a second representative to the World Language Committee, and that be Matt Bacon.
So we, either we can do that as a friendly amendment with the consent of Denise and Dan, or we can, is that a yes?
I'm fine with that.
Fine by me.
Okay. Other discussion? All those in favor of approving the committee assignments for the next school year? Seven in favor, and the student rep in favor. Thank you. All right, the next item is our review of the annual, required annual B policies. So the B policies are around our, our governance and public access to the board. And we have several of those that we review on an annual basis. This is not intending to make changes to these, although certainly an outcome of this tonight could be to refer these to the policy committee to do that. But it is to make sure that we have, on an annual basis, familiarized ourselves, or refamiliarized ourselves with these policies and acknowledge that we have done so. So certainly, we can have some discussion about them if that's appropriate, but at minimum, we'd be looking for a motion to acknowledge the review of the, the B policies that are in the packet tonight. Brian?
Motion to accept the review of these policies.
I'll second. We have a motion from, from Brian and a second from Dan. Any discussion about those policies? We've looked at a lot of these in the last year. Not all of them, of course, but, but we certainly have looked at a lot of them in the last year. So I think they've gotten some good attention and familiarity. I guess I'll also take the opportunity to point out that I believe the town of Durham is doing their annual Right to Know workshop in early May? Is that right? Usually, they invite us to participate in that, and- I'll have to, well, okay, so don't quote me on that. But I've participated in that in the past, and it's, it's an interesting, in addition to what the School Board Association does, it's an interesting opportunity to hear from Durham's Town Council, and that discussion of how Durham council members are thinking about these similar topics, and how they affect that body is, oftentimes, is very similar to how it affects us. All right. Yeah, let's, let's see if we can find out, maybe I'm completely off-base with when that timeframe is for that. They do have, there are some new counselors, town counselors as well, so I assume that they're doing something in that line. All right, so we have a motion and a second to acknowledge the review of these policies. All those in favor? Seven in favor, and the student rep in favor. Thank you. You, you did. Yes.
Perhaps we could take a five-minute break before we move on to the discussion of future board meeting topics? Or I don't, I don't know, I don't know if that'll be a longer discussion, but I know last time, we, we acknowledged that we hadn't taken a break, and ended up going another four to five minutes.
That's, that's true, that we, we went on longer than I anticipated. So yeah, let's do that. We'll take a five-minute recess and come back at 9:01.
No, I don't quite know. Both our lead reps are out.
I heard you.
What's that?
I heard you.
All right. We're back. So the last item on the discussion and action items is something new. It is a planned school board topics and cadence for the spring, and then it kind of spills over into the next school year. I have to credit Dr. Morris and Wendy for giving us the seed of this. They, they started providing Denise and myself a, you know, a kind of a list of topics, matrixed out by when they might fit, going back to maybe the February timeframe that we used for some of our meeting planning. And I, I took that and looked at some of the other things that we've been talking about, and what other things that, that I thought it made sense for us to take up. Reviewed this with, with Denise and with Dr. Morris when we met to plan this meeting, very briefly, but most of this you can blame me for. And so what you have here is a, essentially, the guide that we will use, not, not binding, but just as, to indicate kind of some of the topics that we see coming, and when we see them coming to the board. It also helps me think about how we would, what's gonna fit in meetings and what's not, because we can't cram too much into one of these meetings and really be productive about it. So glad to have some discussion about this, but there is, there is a lot there, and also glad to have comments, thoughts on what shouldn't be there, things that are missing. Go to Wendy and to Jim for us to process as we, as we think about what's coming in the future.
Could we add something?
Absolutely, yeah.
Looking at May 18th, because it's a, looks like a short meeting. Like, I assume Suzanne will be running the meeting if you're not here, right? I'd like to add discussion of naming of facilities to that meeting.
Sorry.
Discussion of naming of facilities, or parts of facilities. I know we've had this discussion in the past, but I think with the new board, we should be bringing that up again. Add that to the 18th.
Is, is that a, a policy discussion, or is that a specific consideration, specific facilities?
Specific consideration.
Okay.
I also, as you're thinking about this, the art of putting an agenda together that's doable within the timeframe we're together. So that's why we spread the major topics out like this, so that we could have like a focused discussion like we had tonight from Suzanne, and still carry on, on business. So as you're looking at this and the reshuffling, just be thinking, is this doable in a, in a, a single meeting?
Just a general comment, I think this is fantastic. I think this really gets at some of the strategy that we've been talking about for years around, you know, just in general terms, keeping track of things, and really managing our, you know, timing and focus of particular things, given that our, as a, as a entity, we are limited to, you know, functioning within the time confines of these meetings. You know, unlike other organizations, we don't have the ability to take things, you know, work on them offline in an active way as a board. So I think this is a really great way to start envisioning our upcoming year. And, you know, it's a, it's a template, it's a, it's something we can, you know, work with and change as priorities and circumstances change. But I, I think this is great. I think this will give us a really good map of the-
So Dan, what you just said is really important to emphasize. So we map out this months in advance, but circumstances will come up, and something might get bumped to a later meeting because something else has superseded it. So thank you for mentioning that.
Yeah, but I think it's, it's just, it's just a good tangible way to look at the upcoming year, and acknowledging that things will change, and, and some of this might change as a result of that. But I think it's fantastic.
And you want to make sure it doesn't, when you do that, it doesn't snowball, and you end up pushing so much stuff that you, all of a sudden, you got this list a mile long that you want to, as we're checking it all, you know, we're gonna make sure we still-
Yeah. Right, and, and some of these topics are definitely time-bound, because we have an obligation around the budget or something that we have to do on a, at a certain timeframe. Some of them are time-bound, because we, we want to keep things moving along, and some of them may be the ones that, that give from time to time.
That's right. Just on top of what Dan said, I appreciate the sequencing of two or three different weeks to, or meetings to think through it, and the combination of things that are on this cycle, the things that are important and time-bound, like the competency-based education, is something that we are really trying to, to, to look at this season. It also gives us a sense of, are we hitting everything that's important but not urgent? And so I emailed Michael and Jim. I wonder if the board has ever or would entertain having an overview or update on special education, and then on AP honors, UNH classes, and other ways that advanced students are challenging themselves. In both cases, these are a large part of our district's operations and identity, but it hasn't been featured since I've been on the board. A couple of other things I thought could be added, or the Sustainability Management Plan update and recommendations. Sue and Suzanne, I believe, are reconvening the Sustainability Committee this month to prioritize the report that we saw earlier, and propose an action plan, so sometime this spring. Also, Al had wisely observed last year that we talk about DEIJ without necessarily having a shared understanding as a board, and wanted to suggest that we, we have a, a workshop or other way of engaging with the, with the, the topic more directly. And finally, the idea of reporting back on our move this last year at the high school to separate into an upper, lower school structure, and reduce electives, I believe. How is that going, and what changes might we want to make, what tweaks in the years ahead?
Are you suggesting that all of those merit the little depth of discussion that, each, or should I say, each of those merit the depth of discussion that we had on competency-based education tonight?
No. So each of those, so for example, we, I see special education, and perhaps challenging advanced students as a one-night presentation, and, you know, Q and A, similar to how counseling presented, or- presented, or some of the presentations that Suzanne has made. Perhaps the electives and upper-lower school structure could be rolled into the operations, the operating plan discussion, or maybe that's something that, since it won't directly affect next year, would, you know, could be pushed further off.
Would the high school structure make sense as part of the competency and strategic plan bits for the high school?
I think it's separate from competency-based. I don't know exactly how they would chunk together, but I think that in the next six months, they should be addressed.
We'll take that into consideration, yeah. And I think you raise a good point with the Sustainability Management Plan being something that the Sustainability Committee is working on over the next few months. There will be other things, I mean, we have active committee work, as we just discussed, and there is ongoing, obviously, there's ongoing policy work that's not reflected here that will come out of the Policy Committee. There are, you know, there's a couple of budget process things here, but certainly not the budget process in its exhaustive, gory detail that will be part of this as well. Suzanne, do you have a comment?
Just to piggyback off of what UC said, I think the two things that you're talking about in regards to the high school is part of the whole high school programming, so I think that if you're talking about special education and maybe AP classes, and running start and those, that's all part of the full program and how the program actually builds on itself, so I don't know if you can, if, that may just be one presentation for the high school and not necessarily two, because you're talking about the whole program in its totality. It's just a suggestion.
That's a good point.
Yeah, thank you.
So, I had a quick question. The DEIJ Coordinator introduction on June 1st, is that a feasible goal?
I'm hoping, that's the timeline I'm working with, so we'll see. It really depends on the quality of the candidates, what we get.
When is the window on the applications close?
15th.
April?
Yes.
All right, and so, this is obviously going to be a living document that is not set in stone and is not something I'm asking for the board to approve, it's just transparency into what we're thinking about what's coming, so.
So, we can do, we can take the suggestions that UC and Brian offered and, you know, add them to the list of upcoming topics, and then we'll figure out where it fits the best in the coming months.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for that discussion. Any other school board committee updates? All right. Public comment? Nope. All right, we've got our future meeting dates, April 20th, May 4th, and May 18th. We have no non-public for tonight, so with that, is there a motion to adjourn? Brian?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second from Heather, all those in favor? Seven in favor, we are adjourned.